Looks good, whenever you're ready, Chief. This June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June sixteenth, twenty twenty one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Board of Selectmen are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Board of Selectmen to be entirely remotely slung as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, or Northborough Remote Meeting button found on the town website. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. If you consult our agenda for this meeting, you will find at the top of the agenda listed the YouTube livestream link, the Zoom webinar link, the phone number to call in through the Zoom application. And finally, this is being streamed through Northborough Cable Access Television Government Channels, Verizon thirty and Charter one ninety two. I'd like to now confirm access of the participants of this meeting. First, I'd like to confirm access, members of the Board of Selectmen. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. My name is Jason Perro, Chairman. Leslie Ratan, Vice Chair. Scott Rogers, Clerk.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch, Member.
Julianne disappeared and.
She just lost power.
She just texted me that she lost power, yeah.
Lost power, okay. Kristin Wickstead, Member.
Here.
Let me confirm the staff members who are present. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Administrator John Codair.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
And Fire Chief David Parenti, who is also our Zoom host for the evening.
Present.
We are additionally supported by the staff of Northborough Cable Access. Just asking for Julianne's report, they lost power. Is there any indication that that's a permanent situation, or we don't really have any idea?
No, we don't know.
One option would be to suspend the meeting for a few minutes to see if.
She indicated to continue without her.
Very good, okay. So we will begin the agenda. When we reach the public comment section, I will go over the procedure. I'm sorry, I have more to cover anyway. Meeting ground rules. I, as Chair, will invite each speaker for each agenda item to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. And each vote taken by the Board or Committee this evening will be conducted by a roll call vote. And now, when we reach public comment, I will go over the details for that. So to begin with the agenda. First item is the approval of the June fourteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Scott.
I move we approve the June fourteenth, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty one, meeting minutes.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. This is a roll call vote. Kristin Wickstead.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. I just, sorry, I'm checking for Julianne's messages here. Right, okay. Sorry for the interruption. Approval of minutes carries four in favor, none opposed. Next item up is past the hour of seven PM, and we have William Liver, Police Chief, for the promotion of Sean Montville to Sergeant. And for this, do we have? Yes, we do. Let me bring Sean in. And I'm also going to bring in Montville and I'm sorry, I'm not sure who else we have on here that is joining us. Chief Parenti, could you assist?
Yeah, you look at, is there, for this particular, I don't think there's anyone else, correct? Chief Liver, just Sean?
Sean, is anybody from your family going to participate?
There's a Thomas there.
What's that?
I have a Thomas Montville.
Are they just viewing for?
They're just viewing.
For this evening?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Sean. Okay, I will turn it over to Chief Liver to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Very pleased to be here tonight. We have a sergeant's vacancy with the retirement of Lieutenant Galvin. There's going to be a promotion to Lieutenant. We're backfilling from the ground up, so we promote him to Sergeant first. Back a month or so, about two months ago, I notified the eligible members in patrol that there was going to be a vacancy as required by our policies and procedures. We consulted, engaged the services of Consulting Service, Badgewest, and they performed a one hundred question, multiple choice exam on Wednesday, the sixteenth, here at the station. Minimum score of seventy was needed to move forward in advance to the Assessment Center, which was conducted on Saturday, the nineteenth, up at the Senior Center. We started off with three eligible employees, and I must say that all three were very excellent candidates. My wife has to call me in the middle of this. So, forgive me. The Assessment Center consisted of situational exercises based on leadership, situational awareness, ability to make decisions and deal with personnel issues. I believe there were six exercises that they'll put through. The panel consisted of three chiefs of police from around Massachusetts. They particularly try not to get chiefs from the area that might know officers, so we had the chief from Hamilton, Mass. Retired, retired chief from Plymouth, Mass. And the other chief was from Salisbury. So unknown to all of the candidates. As a result of the written test, they were ranked as well. Sean scored the highest on the written exam. And then they were scored and ranked on the Assessment Center. Sean scored the highest on the Assessment Center. And then the two scores are added together for a composite score. And of course, he scored the highest on all of those as well. And then there's obviously the chief's recommendation based on the input from the Assessment Center and the consultants. So I have chosen to lend my recommendation to Sean. He's been with us for five years. Graduate of Providence College with a degree in psychology. He's got a master's in business administration from Assumption. So he's been on the midnight shift where he's been hanging upside down in the closet during the day when he sleeps because he's been on midnights for a long time. So as a matter of fact, he will be promoted and go on to the day shift for a little while anyway, until we have a shift realignment, so. I'm very pleased to recommend Sean to you. I even, I'm sorry that it's a little anti, I shouldn't say anti, less than a celebration, so to speak. Normally, when we do these sort of things, we have everybody in the family up to Selectmen's meeting, as you know. Then we do the badge presentation and penning, but unfortunately due to the open meetings, I was hoping that it was going to be an in-person meeting. So I did bring Sean's badge and his collar pins with me. So I'd normally be handing them to them at about this point. So I wish to congratulate Sean and I wish to ask you that you would appoint him as Sergeant.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Sean, would you care to offer a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Chief Liver, Board of Selectmen members. I just wanted to take a quick minute to thank a few people, my family, my parents, Courtney, Todd, Rachel, and my friends for all the support, not just through these last few months, but also for pushing me to be a better person and a better police officer. I've had the very fortunate experience to work here in Northborough and also my prior employment at Assumption with, to work with some amazing dispatchers, officers and supervisors. And they've all had a huge part in making me a better police officer and shaping me into who I hope to become as a supervisor. So I'm excited to take on this new role and to continue to serve the town of Northborough and provide the best service to keep this community safe.
Thank you very much, Sean. Well said. I just want to offer my congratulations. I think certainly you can imagine that the competition for these positions is pretty high. The fact that you were the highest scorer in both the written and also the Assessment Center speaks very much to your abilities to step into this role. I've had the opportunity to observe some Assessment Center being conducted, and it's a stressful situation. You've got, you're under the scrutiny of these, you know, very experienced chiefs and they're not making it easy on any of the candidates, so. It's just a very, very much a strong accomplishment to come out of that with their recommendation, so congratulations. Members of the Board, any comments? Leslie.
Hi, Sean. Thank you very much, first of all, for being with Northborough for five years. You're to be applauded for that. Your wonderful educational background, your experience, your desire to serve here. It's nice to know that our residents are in good hands with someone like you. You're obviously showing your dedication and your desire to do well here and to serve the community. It's wonderful that you did so well on your exam. That says a lot about you as well. So very, very professional and well-trained, and we thank Chief for all his nice words here as well. We're lucky to have you here, so congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I will note that select person Hirsch is attempting to rejoin the meeting. We don't have an audio connection yet. It's, I have it at seven thirteen PM. If there are no other comments, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair. I move the Board vote to appoint Sean Montville to the rank of Sergeant effective July first, twenty twenty one, as recommended by the Police Chief.
Moved by Leslie Ratan, seconded by Scott Rogers. This is a roll call vote. Kristin Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch, if you can hear me. You could give a thumbs up or I'm sorry, I'm not seeing a response from Julianne. Scott Rogers.
Aye.
And Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye, so that carries four in favor. Sean, congratulations, and I just also want to congratulate family and friends who are supporting you. Certainly, that's an important aspect of all of this, and we appreciate their being here tonight to observe, and we are sorry that we aren't conducting this in person as Chief Liver suggested and having more of a celebration in person, so. We wish you well. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, it's past the hour of seven oh five PM, and we have feel like I would rather bring.
John was there and he's disappeared now. Eyes back.
There he is. Is it just John for this Chief?
I believe so, that's all I have.
Yes. Past the hour of seven oh five PM, we have John Campbell for the Open Space Committee. The approval of conservation restriction for six one five Howard Street rear to the Sud Valley, Sudbury Valley Trustees Incorporated pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter one eighty four, Section thirty two. Welcome, John.
Welcome, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Thank you for having me.
Yeah. Would you care to present, John? Let us know what's going on here.
Yes, I would. I'd like to give you a brief background on this property. This property at six fifteen Howard Street came to the attention of the Open Space Committee earlier in twenty nineteen. Because of its proximity to existing town-owned conservation lands, it was an excellent candidate for conservation. So our committee, the Open Space Committee, moved to approve an appraisal process, which we did. The appraisal came back at three hundred ninety thousand dollars on the so-called backland, which is the nineteen acres in question. And that was based on its potential to be developed into a number of single-family homes. We, of course, wanted to see it preserved as open space and contribute to the trail networks and passive recreation areas. In August of twenty nineteen, the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission met in a joint session and both approved moving forward with a offer to purchase this property, which was accepted at the appraised value, and in December of twenty nineteen, the property was brought to the Board of Selectmen for purchase and closure. Because the property was purchased with conservation fund monies that were granted by the Committee Preservation Act funds through town meeting, it is required that this land have a conservation restriction on it. And therefore, we reached out to a longtime partner of Northborough, the Sudbury Valley Trustees, to provide a proposal to serve as the conservation restriction holder. This is something the town has done previously on other properties and similar areas. And SVT provides an excellent service of being the overseer of the guidelines of the conservation restriction enforcement and of course participated in writing the document. So what you have now is a document for approval by the Board for the conservation restriction terms and for the whole thing of saying by the Sudbury Valley Trustees. And that is my presentation. If there are questions in specifics on the property or the CR, I will do my best to answer.
Good, thank you, John. Board members, any questions? Leslie.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for people who are viewing this meeting that this is land that abuts about fifteen hundred or so acres of conservation land, including the Pisgah and the Bald Hill areas. And it's interesting to look at on the map as far as where that exactly is. And that will ultimately potentially have access to passive outdoor recreation. And the other point that I wanted to bring up is that the protection is consistent with the current open space and rec plan, and I think that's important to note, so.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other questions, comments from Board members? Kristin.
I froze up for a minute, so I missed a little bit of what John said. So who owns the land now?
The town owns, the town now owns the land, Kristin, with the approval purchase on December of twenty nineteen. And the CR process is part of the obligation that we have on this land because it was purchased with funds that came from the CPA.
Okay.
And that's the case with most, with the properties acquired by the CPA for open space land and also historic properties. We must put a permanent conservation restriction on them.
Right, okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristen. Any other questions? Sorry?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I was just going to add to Leslie's comments, which were completely correct. And in fact, if you're familiar with the Mount Pisgah Trails, this property goes east, northeast of where the Tyler Trail and the Sparrow Trail meet and would add those acreages to expand the trail network or just exploration up in that area, so. She is correct. It completely borders Mount Pisgah own land now that's owned by, both by the town and a portion by the state.
Great. Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to accept and execute the conservation restriction for nineteen point two acres of property located at the rear of six one five Howard Street as presented by the Open Space Committee.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. This is a roll call vote. Kristin Wickstead.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye, carries four in favor. Thank you very much, John. As always, appreciate your work on behalf of the town.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
And next up, Kristen, I'm going to put you on deck there if you have the list of motions. We may call upon you here.
I do, yeah. I already, I already pulled it up, so.
Yeah. Chief, can you bring in Kathy Juvert? Thank you, Chief. It's now past the hour of seven ten PM. You have Kathy Juvert, Town Planner, to consider the town's right of first refusal for zero Ball Street, map twenty five, parcel thirteen, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty one A. Welcome, Kathy.
Hello.
How are you this evening?
I'm good. How are you?
Very good. Would you care to inform us about this opportunity?
Absolutely. I'll give you a brief summary of what chapter land is all about. I know some of you, you know, have experienced this process before and some of you haven't. It's not something that, you know, regularly happens with the boards, but the state had years ago, has developed a process for people, if you meet certain requirements as far as agricultural production, forestry production. If you meet certain requirements, you are able to get a tax break from the town if you enroll in what's called the chapter either sixty one, sixty one A and or sixty one B. And when I refer to the chapter, it's out of Massachusetts General Law. So it's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter sixty, sixty one, sixty one A, sixty one B. The particular property that's before you tonight is in sixty one A. And when I say it's a, it's a temporary way to protect land because it's not permanent. Ms. Rutan had mentioned the Open Space Plan, the Open Space Recreation Plan. All of the chapter lands are listed in the Open Space Plan, and we list them and map them as temporarily protected. It's not a permanent protection unless the town does purchase the property when there's a bona fide purchase and sale on the land. Tonight's property on Ball Street, one adjacent to one twenty one Ball Street. And the best way, without having a map available here tonight, so the best way to describe this, I think most people are familiar with the, what's called the Bow House on Ball Street. It's right next to the start of the Davidian's Orchards as you approach Ball Street from Church Street. So there's a beautiful house there that has a bow-shaped roof. And this is, that belongs to Cynthia Fawcett. And this is land that the Fawcett's own, that's adjacent to her private residence, that she has received an offer on. It's a four point two, four point two five acre piece of property. And unlike the property that John Campbell was just talking about, one of the reasons why the town wanted to purchase that property was because it's adjacent to existing open space that's either protected by the town or the state. In the case of that Howard Street property, it actually abuts both state and town-owned open space. This particular property on Ball Street, while it enjoyed the protection of Chapter sixty one A, which means the developer, excuse me, which means the owner of the property is, does not necessarily feel the pressure to sell their property. And they're also able to, again, receive reduced taxes, so there isn't the pressure to sell their property. But in this particular case, as happens with most chapter land, the owner reaches a point where they do want to sell the property. So under this particular program, the town receives notice of the, of when a purchase and sale has been signed. In this particular case, somebody wants to purchase the lot and build a single-family home. All the various boards that review these chapter lands, which includes obviously the Board of Selectmen, but also includes the Planning Board, the Open Space Committee, the Conservation Commission, the Recreation Commission. So all of those boards get together, sometimes they get together as a group. But in this particular case, each board reviewed this and everybody individually decided to pass on this particular piece of property. Although it's adjacent to agricultural land, that is privately owned. And so that's to the north of this property, and then to the south of this property is all single-family, you know, developed house lots. So the, while it's a beautiful piece of property, it doesn't add any, it doesn't abut any town-owned land, so therefore it's, it would be just this very isolated piece of property that really wouldn't serve any purpose to the town for open space protection. So all of those boards that I listed all agreed that they would pass on this offer to purchase the property, and then ultimately it's up to the Selectmen to actually not pursue what's called our right of first refusal. So we, so all of those boards are recommending that we don't exercise that right of first refusal.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Appreciate the background and the explanation. Board members, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to not exercise the town's right of first refusal pursuant to Chapter sixty one A for the property located at zero Ball Street based on the recommendations of the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Open Space Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Moved by Kristin Wickstead, seconded by Scott Rogers. I'm sorry, Leslie, did you have a comment?
No, I had seconded, I realized I was on mute, sorry.
Ah, I see, okay. Moved, seconded, this is a roll call vote. Kristin Wickstead.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye, carries four in favor. So thank you very much, Town Planner Kathy Juvert. Appreciate your being here this evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
Enjoy the rest of your week.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. This brings us to reports. We'll begin with Kristin Wickstead. This brings us to reports, we'll begin with Kristen Wickstead.
Okay, I'm not on mute, right, okay. I just had a couple of things based on. First, based on some of the emails that we've been getting, oh, thanks for doing the committee assignments, looking forward to getting going with those. And then could we put traffic and safety sort of concerns generally on the agenda for the next meeting? Because we have been getting quite a few emails again on that, just to address people's concerns. And then I also wanted to ask if we could get an update on the sale of the old fire station at our next meeting.
John, can you address that?
Oh, we talking about the, you're talking about the fire station on Church Street, not the one on Pierce.
Right, yeah, the old, old one.
Yeah, yeah, we just, I can give that to you right now, it's just it's in the queue, it needs to, it's just the the public procurement process needs to be gone through. It's a low priority project at the moment, based on everything else, but it's something we're looking to get to later this summer.
Yeah, because we just need to get the R F Ps, right, to to open up.
Yeah, we did go through a public procurement process, but we've got about four other public procurement processes in the queue that are in front of that. And like I said, that's probably the lowest priority of them, but but it's in the queue, we're looking to get it. Hopefully, towards the end of the summer, we'll get to that one.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So that's, that's all, I.
Okay.
I'll have a good report next time when I go to some other meetings.
They tend to evolve, yes.
What?
They tend to evolve.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With experience, right? Thank you very much, Kristen. Scott Rogers.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. I guess a a general reminder, you know, folks that haven't signed up for Town News, you know, if you if you're not receiving those emails or reviewing those on the website, I encourage folks to do that, as well as continue to look at the open vacancies on boards, committees, and commissions. And if you have an interest in helping out the town, sign up and and put in an application to join us on one of those boards. The National League of Cities has been doing a series of racial equity and leadership webinars. So on both the twenty first and twenty eighth, the the first and second in that series, which are fairly introductory, but will lead up to a in session webinar or in session meeting for for just Massachusetts. Right now, they've got the seven states in the New England area, over four hundred some officials that have participated in in these lectures. Coming up, I think it's on the thirtieth, there's an M S A webinar on mental health policing. So I plan to attend that. Similar to some of the properties we discussed tonight, the Open Space Committee is reviewing an appraisal for twenty nine Whitney Street. So I wouldn't be surprised if that'll come before us at some point in time, either as a right of first refusal, like we did for for Ball Street. Just before the meeting, I joined Becca earlier or late last week on Personnel Board. And Becca, thanks for the the memo and your management on reviewing the employee classification and compensation. Look forward to seeing the results of that, it'll be first time for me of going through that process. So it was really informative to be involved in that meeting. And then finally, as Kristen mentioned, you know, the liaison assignments to different boards and committees. So some of the, some of those folks have had meetings, the ones that haven't had meetings yet, I've reached out, let them know that keep me in in the loop for the things that are coming up, whether that's Conservation Commission, financial planning, open space, et cetera. That ends my report.
Great, thank you very much, Scott. Leslie Rattan.
Okay. I wanted to make note that the Northborough Food Pantry is in dire need of some toiletry items right now. Shampoo, conditioner, soap, toothpaste, and paper towels. Feel free to drop those off in the reception area, you go in and there's a, there's kind of a bench in there and you can drop them off there. I want to thank all the volunteers who work for the Northborough Food Pantry, and I want to thank the residents who contribute. It's all, it's a wonderful endeavor. And I also wanted to make note that there's a, something called the Friend Fridge, which is also located at thirty seventh Pier Street and at the same location as the food pantry. And they have some information on Facebook, if you're on Facebook, you can look on there. Look at what the updates are and who's contributing what and what kind of things they're looking for there. I also wanted to remind residents again of the availability of the transportation safety pages on the town website. Residents are able to request and get updates on traffic safety, crosswalks, enforcement, sidewalks, signs, and trucking congestion. So I think those are wonderful topics for people to be able to write in about. Scott, I know, is active in in providing the updates on there. And the reason I particularly like these pages on there is because that way, everybody sees the same information at the same time, it's available and visible to all residents. And it cuts down on some duplication in terms of what people are wondering about. You can go to those pages, you can actually just go into the search area of the town website and just look up traffic, transportation safety, and and those pages will come up. And then on the left tabs, you can pick the area of interest. But at least you can look back to see if the question that you have has already been asked and answered, and I think it's very helpful. So I do, again, want to thank Scott for for doing that. Very much appreciated. Last week, I attended the local emergency planning committee meeting, which was fantastic. It was actually at the fire department, so my first in person meeting. It was great to be there in person. Thank you to Chief Parenti for running that meeting. Typically, Mike Barwood's friends that he is our, he was our hazardous materials assistant. But he no longer works for the town of Northborough, he has a lot of other things on his plate. So Chief was able to interview and hire someone by the name of Mike Parr, who will replace Mike, and we're looking forward to him, he has some good fire experience, to my understanding. So thank you very much for that, Chief. And that ends my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Leslie. For my report, I really don't have much of anything this week, I'm on the Cape on vacation. It was a hot and sunny day, and the clam chowder at Captain Parker's in Yarmouth, I think, is really spectacular, so. That ends my report. John, anything?
Just wanted to let the board know, the state revenue outlook right now has projections or forecasts that the state is going to finish fiscal two thousand and twenty one, this is the fiscal year that ends this month, an estimated four billion above budget. And so, as you can imagine, there's quite a bit of discussion at the State House and the governor about how that surplus should be used. They want to replenish their stabilization fund, their rainy day fund. But working through the M M A, the M M A's Fiscal Policy Committee, we have strongly advocated that they increase Chapter ninety funding. Chapter ninety, as you know, through the town's legislative priorities process, is is our number one request and ask. The state, Chapter ninety transportation funds can be used for all roadway work. And and it is a the top ask for us. So annually, the state will typically appropriate two hundred million across all municipalities. And that amounts to a little over a half a million dollars for Northborough. So the ask right now is that that be increased with a supplemental to four hundred million for this year. So that's the ask. I've thrown our weight behind that request, made that known to our legislative delegation that that we're interested in in that as a priority. Obviously, they're already already aware of that because we've given that to them in writing multiple years. So we'll see what comes out of that, but the good news is the state is wrapping up the fiscal year in in positive terms. And we anticipate there being some supplemental budgets, or more than likely, they like to earmark with specific specific programs, you know, that may come out, so remains to be seen, but we're hopeful. And we're advocating very strongly for for some additional Chapter ninety funds, so I'll keep you posted on that. That's it, great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up is public comment, so let me just review that briefly. If you are interested in offering some public comment, you can do so if you're connected through the Zoom webinar by raising your hand. If you're connected by phone, you can do so by dialing star nine, which has the effect of raising your hand. Each person who wishes to offer public comment will be brought into the meeting one at a time. You will have to first provide your full name and address. And then you will have three minutes with which to present your comment or concern. Because the topics that are presented typically are not on the agenda, the board will not discuss in any depth or deliberate or make any decisions with regard to what is being offered. If there's a simple informational question that town staff can quickly answer, we will certainly strive to do that. So with that, if anyone has an interest in offering public comment this evening, you may proceed to raise your hand. Going once. Going twice. Very well then, public comment is concluded for the evening. Any new business to come before the board?
No new business this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Very well then, do I have a motion to adjourn? Leslie.
Mr. Chair, so moved.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Scott Rogers. This is, as always, a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye, carries four in favor. I want to thank board members and staff members here this evening for their participation, and we will see you next time. Good night.
Have a great week, Jason, enjoy.